Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, November 25, 2019. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to remind everyone in the audience who may want to speak to any item on tonight's agenda, or for that matter, any item not on tonight's agenda, to feel free to fill out a speaker request form there in the back of the room, there in the foyer. Give that to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, who will get it to me, and we will get you on in the proper order. So having said that, I would ask city clerk Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finnouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic. Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven, aye.
Thank you. I've been informed by Alderman Verbic that he must work tonight and will not be able to join us, so the city council that you have before us is what you get tonight. With that, I'm going to ask our newly sworn in, relatively newly sworn in, 4th Ward Alderman Greg Perkins, to kindly join us as we stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Greg. Now, we move to Item C on tonight's agenda, and that is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none and hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Still moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finnouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven, aye.
Tonight's, thank you, tonight's agenda is approved as presented. We now move to public participation. This is the place on the agenda during which anyone can speak to any item on the agenda. If you would prefer to wait until we get to the item on the agenda to which you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to do that. Does anybody at this point want to speak just as a, as part of public participation? Dwayne Brown from the 4th Ward. You're still from the 4th Ward, aren't you, Dwayne?
Yes, unlike our former Alderman, I still live. I just want to say, the first thing, we're getting a half a million dollars from the state this year off the 19 cent per gallon increase, so I want the council to take that into consideration. Inflation has eroded the financial might of gas taxes, while construction costs continue to grow. Since the late 1990s, the per mile cost of road maintenance has risen about 22 percent. The city of DeKalb wants to raise the local portion from 5.5, 5 and 1/2 cents to 9 and 1/2 cents per gallon. The total would be distributed as follows: 1 and 1/2 cents to the airport fund, 1 cent to the capital equipment replacement fund, and 7 cents to the capital project fund for street maintenance. The state of Illinois has already increased gas taxes by 19 cents per gallon and diesel by 24 cents per gallon. The state didn't just increase the tax, but they also have an index to the motor fuel rate tied to inflation, so that it can retain its purchasing power with periodic increases in the years to come. The cost of fuel in DeKalb, if this tax passes, will be 66 cents per gallon on gas and 79.4 cents for diesel. Illinois already has the third highest motor fuel tax in the country, according to the American Petroleum Institute, behind only California and Pennsylvania. Even the city of DeKalb is not exempt from gas taxes. A gas tax increase will have a negative impact on local economic growth. It will increase the price of consumer goods. It will impact vehicle sales and change people's vacation plans. It will have a negative impact on growth, and it won't solve the real problems, which are wasteful spending, increased fuel economy, and overstaffing. The city of DeKalb spends 81 percent of its income on personnel, $300,000 per year in maintenance costs alone. It will make us even more uncompetitive with cities such as Sycamore, which already allow station owners to sell alcohol. Truckers will bypass the oasis and buy their fuel elsewhere. Commuters will buy their gas at different stations other than Casey's. I'm asking the council to reject this additional tax increase and concentrate on what's important: growth, jobs, improving the image of DeKalb, and eliminating wasteful spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you, Dwayne. Now, I have some speaker request forms, but I'm going to assume that those who want to speak would like to speak at a different time, either during our public hearing or, one of our public hearings, or during the item when it's presented on the agenda. Is that correct? Good. Okay. Now, we have three presentations tonight. The first one is from DeKalb County Community Gardens Executive Director Dan Kenny, as he presents the FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report. Dan, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city staff, for this opportunity to share with you the work of DeKalb County Community Gardens within the city of DeKalb. DeKalb County Community Gardens, or DCCG, is a newer recipient of human services funding. DCCG is very grateful for the support of the city. DCCG's programs focused on three areas: ending hunger, empowering individuals, and growing community. One key component of our food security program is our mobile food pantry known as the Grow Mobile. Since we started the Grow Mobile program in 2017, according to data collected and provided by Northern Illinois Food Bank and by the Feeding America, the food distribution in the county has increased by 20 percent, and the meal gap has decreased by 10 percent. Since receiving the support of the city, food distribution has increased by 17 percent in 2019 compared to 2018. Many factors contribute to these positive trends, so let me share data DCCG has collected, specifically about the Grow Mobile program within the city of DeKalb. Since receiving the Human Services Grant, the Grow Mobile has served 9,448 households, and within those households, 17,025 individuals have benefited from increased access to fresh and healthy food choices. Of those 17,000 individuals, 5,694 are 60 years old or older. DCCG's Grow Mobile program makes weekly drops, drop-and-go deliveries to locations such as Gideon Court, Taylor Street, and Colonial House Apartments. In addition to these locations, DCCG also provides monthly food drops to Barb City Manor, DeKalb Senior Center, Volunteer Action Center, Hope Haven Dresser Court, Elder Care Services, and Safe Passage. In addition to these drop-and-go deliveries, the Grow Mobile also holds monthly pop-up pantries at University Village Apartments and the, in connection with the Welcome Essentials pantry at Unitarian Church on Locust Street. The Antiglade North Neighborhood, where much of DCCG's work occurs, is the only USDA-designated food desert of DeKalb County. In the neighborhood, DCCG also makes food drops at Westminster Church, where they serve a community meal to neighbors. They serve over 90 individuals twice a month. The individuals DCCG serves are of all ages. Many are elderly or live with chronic conditions which make it impossible to work. Individuals also use the mobile pantry who are working, sometimes more than two jobs. The food they get from the Grow Mobile program is essential to stretching their limited income and enabling them to stay in their homes. As I am often told by folks who come to our truck, "This is such a blessing, it is a great help to us." DCCG also uses the funds to assist with our Community Growers Program. This program is where DCCG works with individual youths, youth and those struggling with homelessness to provide job skills while training them to grow food and learn various aspects of food production, processing, and distribution. In addition to soft job skills and training, DCCG also provides a $500 stipend for the 20-week program. One of our recent community growers is now a freshman at Northern Illinois University. Another aspect of DCCG's work is managing the Dresser Gardens. This property is owned by the city of DeKalb and managed by DeKalb County Community Gardens. At this location, residents of DeKalb can rent a 15-by-30-foot plot and grow their own vegetables. At the site located on Dresser Road, DCCG also works with experienced gardeners to assist new gardeners in learning gardening skills. Since DCCG has taken over the management of the site, 15 more plots have been added to reduce the waiting list. We now have nearly 100 garden sites for the residents. However, what is more important to me, beyond the numbers, there are so many examples of what I could share with you, but let me just close with this one vignette. One summer day, we set up at University Village. One of the foods we were distributing that afternoon was carrots. A young teenage boy came up to the truck with one of his brothers on his shoulders. The little one appeared to be about two or three years old. The teen asked for some carrots, which I gladly gave him with excitement, because not very often do you have a teenager ask for carrots. He handed one up to his little brother, and they went off. At the end of our distribution, as I was reloading the truck, I turned around and saw the little one, who was no taller than up to my knee. He was standing there, looking up at me. He had a partially eaten carrot in his hands, and in his cheeks were bulging from the carrots in his mouth. And just for an instant, without any words, he just looked up at me, his eyes bright, and a big smile broke across his face. That is an impact numbers cannot measure, and there are hundreds of such impacts, thanks to the support of the Human Services Grant. I think you will agree with me that the $5,000 given to DCCG by the city of DeKalb is well-spent and goes pretty far in meeting some of the many human needs in our city. Thank you again for this opportunity to share and update you on the work of DCCG and our partnership. On behalf of the answer, any questions?
Any questions or comments to Dan? I'd like to. You know, we have a lot of individuals who I like to call community treasures. You're looking at one right there. For a fellow who taught school for so many years in DeKalb, saw the faces of those kids, perhaps some who were hungry, and to start DeKalb County Community Gardens with grown, with growth areas throughout the city, Walnut Grove now for some of our disadvantaged folks up in Kirkland, Dan, I can't thank you enough, and I am just glad that the city of DeKalb is able to help you in some small way. Again, thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
Our next presentation tonight is a proclamation for 2019 Small Business Saturday, which is November 30th, this coming Saturday, 2019. This is a mayoral proclamation. Whereas the government of DeKalb, Illinois celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the US Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States. They're responsible for 64.9 percent of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. The entire proclamation text is in the background material on our website, if anyone would like to read through that. But to shorten this up tonight, I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November 30, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and small merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. This proclamation is being mailed to the Small Business Saturday Coalition this week, and I'm glad to have been able to have that proclamation to sign. Our third presentation is on something that is coming up very quickly, that is the Illinois State High School Association Football Championships. 16 teams, 16 communities, made up of many fans and families, are coming into DeKalb, Illinois on Friday, perhaps even a little bit earlier than that. I'd like to ask the champion of that, Brad Hoy, from the NIU Athletic Department, to come up and make a few comments about what's coming up for the IHSA football championships this Saturday, excuse me, this Friday and Saturday. Brad?
Thank you, Mayor Smith, council members, members of city staff and DeKalb community. I am not the only champion of this event. We are all champions of this event, everybody in DeKalb and Sycamore and all of DeKalb County. You're the ones that make this event so success. We call it IHSA Destination DeKalb because at the very beginning of high school football season, starting in the summer and all throughout the 12 or 13 weeks, everybody's focusing on that one destination, and that's DeKalb, but only 16 teams can get there from eight classes. And we're excited to have it in our community for the fourth time here in 2019. We'll have it one more time in this, in this go-around, and we'll probably have to bid on it again in 2020, but it's been a huge success. And I'll just throw out a couple of the numbers. I find it ironic that we are celebrating Small Business Saturday on, this coming Saturday, on November 30th, because it's the small businesses in this community that will stand to benefit from the influx of fans that'll be coming into DeKalb County. We'll have about 25, hopefully 30,000 fans come into DeKalb County. Over the years, that's equated to roughly 800,000 to $1 million into the local economy on Thanksgiving weekend, which is traditionally one of the slower weekends that we have here within the county and within the community. The support of the city of DeKalb has been instrumental. It was one of the reasons why we won the bid back in 2012. Mayor Smith, Bill Nicholas, were very much instrumental in that support, and we thank you and the city of DeKalb for the support throughout the years. I also like to thank Alderman Finnouken in particular, who has made it his personal mission in recent weeks to recruit a number of volunteers from the community, but also from here in the city and city staff, to help out with that effort. I'm pleased to report that we have as many volunteers for this session, for 2019, as we've had since 2013. So I think much of that is because of the effort of the folks in the community, the generosity of the people in our community to share their time, and I just think the excitement and the welcoming factor of our community for having these young people, high school age, the moms and the dads and the grandfathers and aunts and uncles and brothers and sisters that will be coming here. They spend money in our, in our restaurants, they spend money in our hotels, they also spend a lot of money in gas, and this year in particular, we have teams from all over the state. In fact, we have three teams that reside more than four and 1/2 hours from DeKalb that will be coming to the state championships this weekend. So we want to extend a special welcome to those folks, because I know one team in particular, Murphysboro, that resides five and 1/2 hours away from the city of DeKalb, just outside of Carbondale. They're going to be spending two nights here in the community and locally, so that's, that's extremely important, and especially if we plan to host this event for years to come. We want to make a good impression on all those fans, and we want them to come back here, and we hope a number of them come back here in the form of NIU students and maybe residents here in the city of DeKalb. So again, my, my thanks to the city, my thanks to city council, the leadership of the community of DeKalb, and the citizens of the community of DeKalb for their tremendous support of IHSA Destination DeKalb, not only here in 2019, but throughout the years.
Thank you. Any, any comments? Do you have a video?
I think we do have a, have a video. I think it might be queued up right here. Is somebody playing that? Yep, there goes the cursor.
Hi, I'm Jerry Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of DeKalb, and on behalf of all the residents of the city of DeKalb, the city of Sycamore, and all of us in DeKalb County, welcome to the 2019 IHSA football championships. I know you're here to follow your favorite team, but if you do have a chance, a few minutes or a few hours, I would welcome you to investigate the many fine aspects of our community. Downtown DeKalb, downtown Sycamore, some great restaurants, some great venues, some great museums, but again, on behalf of all of us here in DeKalb County and the city of DeKalb and the city of Sycamore, welcome to the IHSA football championships. May your team win.
And Brad, I understand that has been sent to the 16 teams?
Correct.
Already, and we've already had that, and we're going to put that on the board?
We are, we are sending that out tomorrow, Mayor Smith. That will go out through our various social media channels. It will be sent directly to the teams, and we will also play it on the video board at Husky Stadium. So if anything, everybody throughout the state of Illinois will know who the mayor of the city of DeKalb is by the time that we're done with this weekend, and so I appreciate the opportunity to talk about Destination DeKalb. I have to go to the same place that Alderman Verbic is going. We have a men's basketball game.
I understand that, right?
At the Convocation Center tonight. We have a football game tomorrow, an NIU football game, and then we have eight football games on Saturday and, I'm sorry, on Friday and Saturday. So again, thanks for the opportunity to talk about this great event, and looking forward to seeing y'all at Husky Stadium this weekend.
Thanks, Brad. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving right along, appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening. We move to Item G on the agenda, Consent Agenda. This is an item in which all items are enacted by one motion unless a member of the council would like to remove one of those items. Is there any requests to remove any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, I'm going to read each of the items on the consent agenda tonight for city council consideration. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 12, 2019. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through November 25, 2019, in the amount Number three, investment and bank balance summary through September 2019. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through September 2019. And number five, the Freedom of Action, excuse me, the Freedom of Information Act FOIA request report, October 2019. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Still moved.
Been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finnouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven, aye.
Thank you. You know, I hope that all members of the council have taken a look at all of the items before they vote in the consent agenda, calling special attention tonight to the Freedom of Information Act FOIA report. If our public has a chance to take a look at that, and it is on our website as part and parcel of tonight's agenda, I'd certainly like them to take a look at that. This month alone, in October, this city spent $4,500 in just simply asking and responding to FOIA requests. No problem with that. I am fully supportive of FOIA, but I'd like to have, to take, have you take a look at the variety of FOIA requests. They range in terms of cost, anywhere from $5. This one, this month, I don't know if you noticed, in October, we had one FOIA request that cost this city $1,440 of staff time to find the answers. So again, I would simply urge the public and our council to consider doing a good vigilant look at our FOIA report. And we have a FOIA officer, Jason Blumenthal, does a great job. Whenever I see Jason in the, in the hall, and I may ask him to do something or to consider doing something, he said, "Well, right now, I'm working on FOIA." So he spends a lot of time, and I do appreciate the council's affirmative vote on our Freedom of Action report for October 2019. Okay, we move along now to public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. I will note the time of the beginning and the end of the public hearing. There's no speaker and time limitation, any of our speakers who would like to speak to any of the members or any of the public hearing. Our first public hearing is the 2019 Annual Property Tax Levy. I first of all would like to ask city manager Nicholas if he'd like to speak to this item in any way.
Mayor, in deference to the public who've come possibly here tonight to get any one of these three public hearings, I'll defer until the public gets some.
Okay. I don't believe we have anyone that has indicated an interest to speak on the 2019 Annual Property Tax Levy. Opening this meeting then at 6:27. Are there any public comments on the 2019 Annual Property Tax Levy, which, as those of you who have followed FAC and council meetings know, that we've discussed quite, quite extensively? If not, I will close this meeting, this public hearing, at 6:28. Our second public hearing tonight is the Proposed FY 2020 Budget. City manager Nicholas, would you like to defer to any public comments prior to any comments that you might make? Okay. Our first speaker who would like to speak to this is no stranger to us, and that is our city clerk Lynn Fazekas. I take it you may be speaking as a private citizen or as a city clerk. I see your address is on there, so Lynn?
Mayor, I think we need an official opening time?
Oh, yes. We are, thank you. We open this public hearing on the Proposed FY 2020 Budget at 6:29. And Lynn Fazekas, if you'd like to speak to this item, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Going to speak to two items on the budget tonight. One is the city clerk's budget. As you know, the city clerk's budget has actually been folded into the legislative budget, so there's no breakout, so I am providing you a breakout of these expenses. And the reason that I have distributed these to you is because chances are you haven't seen it because of that fold-in. Now, even without my knowledge or permission, and therefore, they don't show up, this item does not show up in the budget at all, whether in the proposed budget that you're looking at or the breakdown. So that's the main reason that I'm doing this separately. What I hope to do is inform the public about the changes, and any discussion, any public discussion, of course, would be welcome. Of course, that's your prerogative. I would ask that council consider affirming for the public that the clerk's office, which is an independently elected and city-wide elected office, has the right to put forward a budget that is discussed in public and amended only by the council, that my numbers be considered by the council. To this end, what I'm asking for specifically is that the annual city budget return to containing a separate record of both the proposed and final budgets specific to the office of the clerk. In other words, in the interests of transparency, I ask that the clerk's office budget appear separately, on a separate page, as they used to do for years and years and years, so that everyone can see it and see what happens to it. So I feel this is a reasonable request, and I know, since it only took me a few minutes to write this up, that it would be pretty easy to do. Okay, so that's the clerk's office. Now I have some comments about the finance, the finance budget. There's a lot in it that I do not understand, and I'm hoping to spark some conversation about that. Okay, so as you know, if you have the budget in front of you, starting on page 74, so I'm going to be talking about pages 74 through 77, and 74 has the projected staffing levels. So you can see several years of the staffing levels and those proposed for 2020. It says 2020 is to have five full-time and two part-time staff. The problem is that if you go a couple pages beyond that and you look at the full-time wages, and I believe full-time and part-time are both kind of problematic when it comes to figuring out what's going on, but in particular, the full-time wages are projected at $182,581 for 2020. But if you look at the pay grades that are contained in the non-union management pay plan, and you look at the annual compensation reports, which both of those things are, can be found online for everybody's information, on the human resources pages of the website. At any rate, $182,581 would only, at best, cover the three full-time staff that we already have at this moment. So the finance is down to full-time staff. There are three full-timers right now. And not only that, but these numbers are, this number, this $182,581, happens to be the same number you would come up with if you went to the 2019 Non-Union Management Pay Plan and chose the absolute minimum wage of the range. However, you would expect that the minimum would be paid to somebody who would be new, and we only have, only one of those staff are new. I hope you're following me okay. I'm trying, I'm doing the best I can. Two staff have been here for several years, one from FY 2013 and one from, I believe, FY 2015. And you would not expect for their pay to be the minimum of the pay scale on each pay grade. So another question comes in, are we expecting more turnover? That's, okay, so anyway, bottom line is, which number is correct? The staffing level number that appears on page 74, which says five full-timers, or the wage number on page 77, which suggests only three full-timers will be staffing finance this year? That's my question. Now if the staffing level is to remain at three full-timers, that's quite a big leap. That brings up another concern, and that is how procedures have changed to keep up with the skeletonizing of the department. So just for a little bit of historical context here, 10 years ago, we had 10 full-time people in finance. That was probably too many, which we saw when we hit budget troubles, had to reduce staff in all departments in 2012, 2013, and the number of full-timers dropped down to eight. And then, and for a couple more years, what you saw was that we stabilized between six and eight full-timers, and had anywhere from two to four part-timers in that department up until this year, in fact. So there is, I'm concerned about the finance department for these reasons. Now I get that there has, there was a transfer this year of some of the license processing from finance over to the city manager's office. That would account for a little. And I understand that the new ERP software is fantastic, but I don't know how you get from 10 full-timers to three full-timers, even with these types of reassignments and new efficiencies. The latest reduction is remarkable. I believe it should be examined. We used to have a named treasurer/controller, and then that disappeared. We used to have a named treasurer/controller. Then that disappeared. Then the policies were rewritten, and we had a full-time finance director and a full-time assistant finance director to take the place. That was done over about a two-year period from 2011 to 2013. Since then, it's been finance director and assistant finance director. Now we have none of the above. And I note that this is out of compliance with the Illinois Municipal League's recommendations for financial risk reduction. And as a matter of fact, the, if you haven't seen it, the October IML review, just this past October, had a series of articles on municipal theft, risk reduction, internal controls, and it was fabulous. And they definitely were upfront in saying, have both a treasurer and a controller. Okay? We don't know who those people are or what roles they are. We're not following our own Chapter 54 policies right now. And definitely, from time to time, the IML also recommended that some of these procedures for internal control of your financial operation do need to be reviewed. And I believe that with these significant changes in finance that I have just outlined for you, that the time is now for that review. And with that, I am finished.
Thank you, Lynn. Now, nobody else in the audience would like, indicated an interest to speak to the public hearing, Proposed 2020 Budget, except Lynn, thank you. And I'll turn it to City Manager Nicholas for any comments he might have.
Well, the, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, which is probably nothing that anyone's too concerned about. Probably good for all. I'll be very brief. The budget comes up under ordinance's first reading. I'll have a little more to say then, but I should address a couple of the concerns that were raised by the city clerk. I'll start with finance, and then I'll also ask Assistant City Manager Ray Munch to weigh in, because he is finance director, and then I'll finish with a few comments about the clerk's budget. Just so the viewing public and people here in the audience are aware, I would hearken back to something Dwayne Brown said at the top of the meeting. At the beginning of this fiscal year, the council made it very clear that they wanted us to find a way to, quote, "right-size the budget." And if that meant some adjustments in personnel, which is a large part, as Dwayne said at the top of the meeting, of our annual budget, particularly our operational budget, then so be it. On January 28th, the council approved a number of reductions at the management level. And since that time, intermittently through the fiscal year that is nearing an end, there have been some other adjustments that have been made. Some people have retired, some people who were senior and at senior pay scales have moved on to other jobs. Notwithstanding this, we produced what the Finance Advisory Committee and the council thought was to be a notable budget, in line with all generally accepted accounting practices. Our CAFR, which was produced by these people who are here at the beginning of the year for 2018, because it's the compilation of the year that ended before that, was well-done and was also notable. In addition to our own audit, we have performed, this finance crew has performed valiantly in doing a very special-purpose forensic audit on our TIF program, which has been very time-consuming, in addition to paying the bills and taking care of the revenue that comes in. And so I'm actually very proud of this group and Ray Munch, and I'm happy to say that in this context. Ray, do you have anything you want to add?
In terms of staffing and staffing costs that are reflected in the budget, the finance department is probably the one department where there's a close nexus between the work they do and money that comes out of other funds. So a perfect example that I'll give you is if you look at the org chart for the finance department, there's a position labeled Account Tech 1 UB. UB stands for utility billing. That position serves the function to bill every water bill in the city of DeKalb, and as such, that function does nothing else but utility billing services. So that particular position is funded 100% out of the city's water fund and not out of the general fund. Other things that you see in that org chart in terms of where positions are funded, your Account Tech 2 that does APAR, some of the function that they serve is taking care of all the hangar rental billing and accounts receivable for the airport. So there's a portion of that position salary that's accounted to the airport fund. Your accountants and your senior accountants do very heavy lifting when it comes to water fund and airport fund and all the other city funds. So there are small portions of other salaries accounted to other city funds, other than the general fund, which is the only fund that's reflected in this actual department page in the budget.
Finally, just a note on the legislative budget, which does include the city clerk's office. We follow the same format that's been in place for a couple of years, for consistency's sake, so people can see across the 2017, 2018, 2019, and proposed 2020 budget levels where we are, and identified for the first time, actually, what the salaries of our elected officials are. It's been included, but not necessarily highlighted for transparency's sake. And finally, I would add that on October 14th, the council, after a couple of months of back-and-forth conversation about the clerk's office, determined that no additional funding should be available to the clerk's office, that we were doing this fine as is, and that was a five-to-two vote, so we proceeded with the budget accordingly.
Thank you. I too, perhaps along with some other city council members, would, might have some comments regarding the proposed FY 2020 budget. I think the public hearing is not the place for that. We wait till we get to the item on the agenda. So with that, we have nobody else who would like to speak to this item, so I would like to close this public hearing at 6:46. Licensure for DeKalb Tattoo Company. I have one individual who would like to speak to this item, and that is Cassandra Smith. Cassandra, would you like to speak now?
Sure.
Please. And please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Okay.
No, excuse me, this is a public hearing. You can take as long as you'd like.
Okay. So I am the one who will be the new owner of DeKalb Tattoo Company. I've been working there for the past four years. I have been managing the business for the past, like, eight months or so. The previous owner had moved away to Florida, so that's why I'm taking over, and I hope to make this business the best tattoo shop, best quality piercings, best jewelry, safest place to get pierced in DeKalb. That's really it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And let me somewhat belatedly say that I opened this public hearing at 6:47 PM. Now, thank you, Cassandra. And now I'd like City Manager Nicholas, do you have any comments on this?
I don't.
Okay, we will be, this will be a consideration item later on in the meeting. So I will close this public hearing at 6:49 PM. Okay, moving right along on our agenda tonight, no special considerations, item I, we now move to resolutions. Resolution 2019-152, approving the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIPS, for federal fiscal years 2021-2025 at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport. To open discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Faver. Speaking to this item is City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As I indicated in my background for the council tonight, the five-year plan, which is a mandatory exercise that the council goes through, has to send basically a message to federal and state levels that we are interested in some funding support from the feds and from the state level. The State Department of Transportation and Aeronautics and the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, are the key funding agencies. We're also obligated to pay a local share- We're also obligated to pay a local share of all of the projects that are funded by other levels of government, and those shares vary, if, as I pointed out in the background, if there is both a federal and a state share, then our local share is 5%. If there's just a federal and a local breakout, then our share goes up to about 10%. Also, we have to identify the projects in order for which we are seeking assistance. We have a couple carryover projects that were not funded and which we are interested in getting assistance on, and some, one of them has to do with our instrumentation, another has to do with crack repair on runway 220. And then the biggest of all the projects in the next couple of years is a four-and-a-half million dollar project to overlay runway 220, and that's our longest runway and the newest of the two runways. And then ultimately, we are working with snow removal equipment, which has been handed down from a variety of airports over the years as cast-off equipment, and we are hoping to get some assistance in funding adequate equipment for these two substantial runways. And that is basically the five-year scope. We are, as the council's aware, working with the Daily Group on the federal end of the funding spectrum, and we will continue to do that and report as progress is made.
Now, open it up for any comments or questions to anyone regarding the approval of the TIPS program for 2021 through 2025. Alderman Faver.
We're able to add projects, are we able to add projects, I guess is the question, are we able to add projects? Because I know there's some, the FAR 139 certification, that's going to require some additional fencing and some other.
Right, and I think the council has seen the longer list, we were highlighting the substantial list that's before us in the first couple of years. We can, we have added a number, it comes basically up to about $10 million overall, and the, it is possible to do so, but there is a process for it. We don't just say, we'd love to have a little more money from you, the federal government, and we have to go through a process of public hearings like we're doing here tonight, or public consideration, I should say. And then ultimately, any changes have to be approved at the state and federal level.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? It's been moved and seconded that we approve this resolution. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. Now we move along to Resolution Number Two, and this relates to our public hearing, which we had just a few minutes ago on this item. Resolution 2019-153, approving a body art establishment license for the DeKalb Tattoo Company, 817 West Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Faver. Speaking to this item, City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. If the council supports this, it has to be reasonably assured that the proposal is meeting three different standards, and I've highlighted those in the background. One is that the establishment is necessary and desirable, and what that means in this case is that there has been demonstrated some demand for this, and this is a business that's been existing for a while. In fact, the petitioner and the person who spoke earlier has been an employee of the business for some time. Also, that the establishment meets a public need, and one of the public's foremost needs always is that the business will provide safe services, and we have not been aware of any disclosure of concerns regarding the safety of what they provide, and that it will not be too close to other body art establishments, and as you can see, it's substantially distant from other body art establishments. So as far as the staff background is concerned, that was our intent, is to present that to you and let the council decide what you'd like to do. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this? Alderman Smith.
Mr. Nicholas, if I correct, they're just replacing one business with another, correct?
Yeah, new owner, same place.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2019-154, authorizing the sale of row property located at 901 Sycamore Road. That's PIN 08-14-401-013, in the amount of $8,500. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of those properties that was on a list that was presented to the council in August of this year, and we have interest from an adjacent property owner who is interested in doing something that conforms to our, with our UDO, and we recommend approval to you.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That resolution is approved. Now we move to ordinances. We have one ordinance tonight for second reading, and this is an ordinance that we discussed at our last public meeting. We did not waive second reading on this, so this is the second reading. We have passed this on first reading. It's ordinance 2019-071, amending Chapter 38, intoxicating liquors, Section 38.18, catering event permits. I'd entertain a motion to approve this on second reading.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Faver. City Manager Nicholas, would you like to reiterate what you talked about last time?
Well, and with one addition.
Okay.
Councilmember Morris proposed that we try to make it more business-friendly to approach a licensing such as this, and we had a little conversation, the council, in reaction to councilmembers, a councilmember Morris's suggestion seemed to be favorable. There was no formal vote taken, but the suggestion was, what can we do to cut down on those annual fees? There is a right-of-entry here, if you will, a initial registration fee, but it seemed excessive that there would still be, even though it was reduced, $54 per event additional fee. And so in this interim between first and second reading, at the staff level, we wanted to recommend to you one more tweak on this, and you've had a chance to read this, I think it makes sense. So the people coming in, these are not major events, well, they might be, but oftentimes they're smaller events for not-for-profits and so forth, and so we recommend the approval of the ordinance with the proviso that we drop the additional per-event fee of $54.
So even though we voted on a slightly different document and approved it at first reading, can we make these changes in second reading?
Yes.
If I have a motion?
I believe, as long as you understand what I just explained, then we can.
Right, we've seen it in the background. And Alderman Morris, this aligns with what you were looking at, looking for?
Absolutely, yeah, this is great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, good.
And I'm sure all of the businesses appreciate it, too.
We like to work together, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Okay, is there any further discussion then? This would be to pass this ordinance on second reading with a couple of the changes requested by council. Is that a fair synopsis of what we're trying to do? Okay, roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. Now we move on to ordinances, first reading, and the first one is ordinance 2019-074, adopting Chapter 13, Municipal Cannabis Retailers' Occupation Tax. We do have one, excuse me, a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman McAdams. We do have one speaker who would like to speak to this item, and that is Dwayne Brown.
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. At the March 2017 City Council meeting, Justice Groan, represented by Jamil Taylor, was granted an approval by an eight-to-zero vote for a medical marijuana dispensary on Peace Road. Unfortunately, the state never granted them a license, so they had to go through the entire process again. Hopefully, this time, the state will be prompt and issue a license. The city staff members are recommending a one-year time limit for the dispensary to obtain the license, and an additional six months after the approval of the license to complete the Peace Road build-out. I urge the council not to impose the full 3% recreational marijuana tax. When these businesses all come together, the recreational and the medical, on the recreational side, don't increase the tax the full amount, at least not to begin with. Start at one and a half or 2%. Eventually, it's going to be a competitive business. We need a complete advantage, a competitive advantage, like a lower tax rate. I asked the council to approve this and hope the state issues the licenses as soon as possible. I'm commenting on both the medical cannabis retailers occupation tax and the coming ordinance for the zoning approval, too, Mayor, so I thought I'd just do it in the same, instead of, but I hope they approve both of them. And eventually, we're to get 500 licenses in the state, but I don't know when we're going to get a license. It may be June of 2020, if then, before we even get a recreational license. So, you know, I think the state is being over-cautious on this. I mean, really, you know, it's approved, yet they're not issuing the licenses, so I don't know, it just seems over-cautious. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Alder, City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're proposing to you tonight an ordinance on first reading that conforms to the council's direction from August and September, which was to consider, as we went through a number of zoning changes, the possibility of imposing a municipal tax per the tax, per the state law, at the full 3% allowed under the law for municipalities. And I noted in the background what the state taxation levels would be, and there are three different categories, and also noted that the county of DeKalb in September approved an additional tax of 3/4% on marijuana sales within municipalities, so that's to be taken into consideration as well. But this ordinance, if approved tonight or on second reading on another night, would impose a 3% local tax, and we have recommended this per the council's guidance.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about this quite a bit, but any other questions or comments? Alderman Morris.
I have a question. I guess I'm trying to understand exactly what the county did. So if they are, they've approved this additional tax of 0.75% on marijuana sales within municipalities, so does that mean we can go to 3.75? Is that?
That would be 3.75 locally. That's the county and the city tax combined.
Okay, and so do they get a piece of that pie?
They get the 7, they get the 0.75.
Okay.
This does, in other sales, non-cannabis sales, they get a quarter percent on all the sales registered here at our commercial retail.
So they're affording us the opportunity to decide if we want to tax more and give some to them? Yes?
No. Independent of what you may do tonight, they have already imposed the 0.75%. That stands regardless of what you do, but if you vote for the 3%, then the combination of the local and county-wide tax would be 3.75% plus the state taxes as they may apply.
Thank you for that.
Alderman McAdams.
Do we have any idea of the increased cost to law enforcement as a result of legalization?
That's a very good question. We don't, we don't know yet. There is, as I indicated in the background, part of the state law, an allocation that will come to local governments, is to be used to fund crime prevention programs, training, interdiction, and so forth. That would be 8% of the overall state proceeds, and we don't know what that number's going to be. There's a lot of question mark involved right now, so we will see.
Alderman Morris.
I guess I'm curious now if any of council is interested in reducing that 3% at all, just knowing that our county is going to be higher, or do we think that there isn't a competitive issue because of the limited licenses?
Alderman Fanoukian.
If I may, almost every other municipality that's approved has gone up to the 3% no matter what their county tax has been set at. So I think that there is no competitive disadvantage for us to be at that 3%.
Alderman McAdams.
I'd be open to reviewing the tax rate again in six months to a year, but I'd be, my personal goal would be to capture as much money as physically possible from the sale of recreational and medical cannabis.
Okay, Harry, Alderman Smith.
I just brought something to mind, is the medical marijuana taxed or not, correct? As a, you know where I'm going with that?
It's taxed, but it's not a 3% rate. It's at a lower rate. For example, your sales tax that applies, the medical stuff is at a lower rate, so it's at a lower rate.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? We're voting now on the adoption of the Chapter 13, Municipal Cannabis Retailers' Occupational Tax. This is first reading, and we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Is there any desire? Excuse me, Bill.
I was going to say, I would like to move to waive second reading and approve this evening.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian and seconded by Alderman McAdams that we waive second reading on this and approve this ordinance as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance is passed as presented. Number two, ordinance number 2019-075, amending Chapter 51, Traffic, Schedule C, Parking Prohibited, and Section 3, Resident Permit Parking Only Tow Zone, as it pertains to a parking restriction for the entirety of Hannah Court. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
We support this. I want to thank Councilmember Morris and Police Department, our city engineer, Zach Gill, for collaborating on this. We will have some more work ahead of us here in the vicinity of Lauren Court, and we'll be bringing back another ordinance, but for now, where Hannah Court is concerned, we believe this will address some problems that the residents have identified in recent months.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Any council member want to waive second reading?
Yes, please. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perkins. Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance then is passed as presented. Number three, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven six, amending chapter fifty-one traffic, schedule E, limited parking, section fifteen minutes between six AM and six PM as it pertains to parking restrictions on North Second Street. I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
I want to thank Councilmember Smith for his advocacy here. And I would add that when the council, a number of months ago, revised downtown parking after a lot of stakeholder input, we determined a three-hour turnover period was reasonable. But one just can't resist the smell of sweet confection at the confectionery. And we need to have a more rapid turnover in that vicinity, and there are a few other places around town where we may want to make that adjustment. It's all good news. It's a great business, and there are no complaints about what you're, we're proposing to you, so we recommend your approval.
Any further discussion? Alderman McAdams.
It just seems to make sense that the more customers that we can bring into downtown, the better the businesses will do. And so, this is one of those reasonable things that I think that we can, a step that we can take to, to make things better for the business community.
Alderman Smith.
I'm going to second Alderman McAdams. Real quick, that, you know, we've got what we wanted downtown, and that's growth. People are coming downtown, and I think we need to start making some changes. And this is just the first, I think, of several. Scott and I have talked about a few that I think will generate turnover and traffic. So, I think we're getting what we want as far as downtown is concerned. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Smith, and Alderman McAdams for your comments. Any other, any others? Okay, roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
This motion passes on first reading. Anybody prefer to waive second reading and approve?
Waive second reading and approve, second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you, that ordinance is passed as presented. Number four, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven seven, amending chapter sixty-six motor fuel tax. I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have discussed this in public meetings, televised public meetings with the Finance Advisory Committee and at workshops since the beginning of October. And it's, it's not easy when you are in the business of trying to, we were talking about it earlier, right-size government, and to reduce expenditures wherever possible without reducing services, that we need to even consider a raising of any tax. But the public, our residents, our businesses, have been crying very loudly for more attention to our streets, and we simply do not have another recurring capital source for that that is, is at hand. And the same is true with our various fleets, which are accruing at a pretty rapid pace, a, an obligation which we will not be able to meet if we don't start attacking it. So, that's what the four cents is generally for. The one penny going to the street replacement fund, and the three cents going to our streets. What's in the budget that you have just gone over, and which will come back, is, is to basically raise our, our speed allocation to about two point four million dollars in two thousand and twenty, and we need it. And we're still sagging behind, but we're making up some ground this year, and hopefully, we can keep that pace in the years ahead.
Yeah, and I think if anybody looks at the minutes from Finance Advisory Committee, it's in the budget, and our city council, you'll see what is planned for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty in terms of road improvements and road resurfacing, et cetera. And I applaud Public Works and others who took a look at this and identified some, some real needs in the community. And so, with that, I would entertain any further discussion or questions of City Manager Nicholas. Alderman McAdams.
What percentage of their taxes are, yes, taxes come from the oasis?
Oh, what percent does?
I know it's the majority, but I didn't know what the number was.
I can't give you a hard number off the top of my head. I'd rather not, you know.
But as I understand it, the.
It's a substantial amount.
Yeah, substantial amount comes from people who are visiting.
Correct.
Traveling through.
Alderman Fanouken, I know you've addressed this at times, it's fairly significant, is it not?
It is. I believe we've been told it's as high as forty percent at one time or another, so.
Do you believe your fellow Alderman in that?
I do.
Okay, very good.
I'm sure that's because we're both white folks.
I see, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Alderman Fanouken.
I would like to move that we waive second reading and approve. Second.
We have Alderman Fanouken moving that we waive second reading and approve, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That ordinance is approved as presented. Number five, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven eight, authorizing the two thousand and nineteen levy and two thousand and twenty collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes and special service areas of the city of DeKalb for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty. I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Lot of numbers, lot of numbers. I think there is one significant message that we can send to our, our residents and our businesses. The city levied about six and a half million for our corporate levy in two thousand and eighteen. That produced a tax rate of one point one eight eight three. The two thousand and nineteen corporate levy has increased, but because we have seen some growth in the, in the denominator, if you will, the calculation of the rate that affects all of our local taxing body, taxpayers, the tax rate we projected is one point one four zero three. That's a decrease of four point two percent. And I'm happy to herald that, and the growth that we expect to see in, when the final EAV is computed and released in the spring. So, growth is very important. I appreciate the council's support in a number of ways, legislatively, in the course of the last year, to, to promote a more business-friendly environment, and here's the payoff. Thank you.
And again, I think this was one that was favorably and pleasantly supported and received by FIC and our councilman during our FIC city council joint meeting. Any further questions or discussions on this? If not, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. Number six, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven nine, abating taxes levied for corporate purposes of the city of DeKalb, Illinois for the tax year two thousand and nineteen, bonds. A motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Mayor, we're able to abate taxes levied for debt, and it's something that we referenced in the background to the annual property tax levy. Historically, for some time, the only debt payment that's not abated is the principal and interest for the two thousand and thirteen library expansion project. And this year, we have four hundred ninety thousand and seventy-five dollars projected for that debt payment in two thousand and twenty. While that, you know, we have, we have an interesting situation. We don't have a separate library district, so although the debt is actually paid by the library, the debt issuance is in the city's name. And so, we, working with the county, see that the levy is automatically passed through under our levy. So, we recommend approval of this, and you can do it on first, or first and second reading at this point.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris. Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Did you get your vote, Alderman Morris, on that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mayor Smith, yes.
Seven I.
Is there a motion to waive second reading and approve this ordinance?
Mayor, before the council responds, in that the council did not vote on, on second, or to waive second reading on the levy, why don't we keep this at, at first reading as well? We'll do them both at the next meeting.
You say we did.
One is connected to the other, so.
Did I not ask for a waiver of second reading?
Not on, not on the levy.
On the levy and the collection of taxes?
Number five.
Didn't I? We did not?
We did not.
Can we go back to that now and?
Sure.
Okay. Well, first of all, there's a motion on the floor, and a second, I believe, to waive second reading for a number six, right? Have we had that? Okay, well, let's go back to five then, and I apologize for that oversight. Going back to ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven eight, authorizing the two thousand and nineteen levy and two thousand and twenty collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes and special services area of the city of DeKalb for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty. This passed unanimously on first reading. I now see if any council member wants to waive second reading and approve the ordinance.
So motion.
Been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Yeah, I apologize for not asking for that waiver. Now, I am asking for, see if any council member wants to waive second reading for ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven nine, abating taxes levied for corporate purposes of the city of DeKalb for the tax year two thousand and nineteen bonds.
So moved. Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Now, we come to number seven, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash zero eight zero, adopting the annual budget of the city of DeKalb, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning January two thousand and twenty and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of one hundred and one million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot that we could say about this proposed budget. We spent five hours discussing it with the Finance Advisory Committee over two different nights, and there's been lots of conversation about key elements of this. One of the, one of the points that was a strong point in the city's five-year financial plan, and also at the beginning of the fiscal year, a, basically, an imperative in the eyes of the council was to firm up our general fund balance. And I'm happy to report that the budget you are seeing before you tonight reports that our estimate is, at the end of the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year, that we will have added two million dollars to our, our general fund reserve. It was about, a little over seven point four million. On January first, it should be pretty close to nine point four million at the end of this fiscal year, jumping from around twenty percent of budgeted general fund expenditures to over twenty-six percent. We, there is a benefit that we were able to achieve through the, the one-time TIF, the closing of TIF two and, and the, the variation that would take longer than we have to discuss as TIF three comes on, and TIF one, where they are sharing common geography, and TIF one fades away. But that's about a half a million dollars. So, a million and a half came from pretty much the old-fashioned way, with some constrained spending, layoffs on the management level, without diminishing overall services. And I'm very happy to propose this budget to you. I believe it addresses both our capital needs in the near term and also our, our general operating needs, and we ask for your support.
We have a motion on the floor, a second. Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. I had indicated earlier in the meeting that I would have some comments on this budget process, but I think I'll defer to any member of our city council now prior to my thoughts on the budget. Alderman Morris.
I guess I would like to ask a little bit about our finance department's structure. And I guess I want to better understand who our senior accountant is and who our accountant is.
I could do that, but I think the person who's been slugging it out in the trenches all year is Ray Munch, as our finance director, and I'll happily defer to him.
So, the, the overall structure of your finance department is, as the assistant city manager, I'm currently acting in the capacity of the finance director, so I oversee the day-to-day operations of the department. From an operational standpoint, much of the day-to-day work is done by the senior accountant, who is Bob Miller. Bob Miller formerly served as the assistant finance director, but when the finance director position was dissolved, we reclassified that position with a more appropriate title. We also have an accountant, that is Susan Hauman. And underneath the two of them, you have more of your line-level accounting and clerical-type employees, one whose primary responsibility is utility billing with the water division. You have another who handles all of our accounts payable and accounts receivable. Then you have two part-time customer service representatives. They both work about twenty to twenty-five hours a week, and they handle all of your frontline customer service at the finance front counter. And then, for two thousand and twenty, we have a, another account technician position that is slated for a payroll function primarily, also providing some assistance on the licensing end.
So, do you think, in the way that this office is functioning, do you see that they're operating in the same sort of sense, like a comp? operating in the same sort of sense like a comptroller and treasurer might operate with checks and balances of sorts? How do you see them operating? How do you see the checks and balances existing to make sure that there's no opportunity for bad things to happen?
So first and foremost, I'd like to say that your, your annual financial audit really takes a look at this every year in terms of your account controls and things like that, but for the average person, they probably don't understand how our various approval levels work. So every dollar that flows out of this city goes through multiple levels of approval. So we'll use the Police Department as an example. If the Police Department pays $50 for a pair of brake pads on a squad car, that gets entered into an AP system. The Chief of Police has to approve that purchase in the AP system. That comes to me then as the Finance Director in that AP system, and I have to approve it. It then goes to the Accounts Payable Staff. They look at it again and approve it, and that's the standard process for approval of expenditures in the city. Now, depending on the amount of the expenditure, you add other levels in. If it's above $10,000, the senior accountant takes another look at it, and again, anything over 10,000, between 10,000 and 20,000 requires City Manager approval. So there are a multitude of layers of approval and oversight that go into all of the expenditures and the monies flowing out of the city, and, you know, if I'm going to be frank, you know, do I have experience as a Finance Director? No, I'm not an accountant by trade, but the one thing I will say is I consider myself to probably be one of the most ethical people that you will find, and if there's a watchdog of the city's finances, it is truly I.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, roll call, please. Excuse, excuse me, I'd like, before you call a roll, I'd like to just make a couple of comments before we, we vote on this. You know, when we hired our City Manager a year ago, we charged him with a number of things, not the least of which was to balance this budget and to make the necessary moves to make this budget something that we could be proud of and look at, not only working with our Finance Advisory Committee, but working as a city council. And as I had indicated during the FAC City Council joint meetings, I thought the narrative in this budget, 263 pages of it, was excellent. I think it tried to explain each and every department, each and every dollar, and one of our public participants during the first exercise, if you remember, asked us as a Finance Advisory Committee and the City Council to have a wide-ranging discussion where everyone was participating, and I think with the exception of one person that first evening, with the exception of one person, everybody did in fact participate, whether those were comments, whether those were questions, and Ray Munch, our Assistant City Manager, and Bill Nicholas, our City Manager, were quick to, to respond to those questions. Some of those questions weren't the easiest to answer. Tom Teresinski from our Finance Advisory Committee, I tell you, when Tom looks at something and he asks a question, sometimes we have to get back at him, and I know, Bill, you did that on six or seven of his points, that you couldn't answer that night, but you did. And so I was very impressed with the process. I was very important, impressed with the collaboration, and I think the annual budget that we are about to vote on here in first reading is one that, that we took a look at, and hopefully we will see some approval here from, from this City Council. Having said that, roll call, please.
I do have one question.
Yes.
But before we get to that.
Sure.
What are the pros and cons of including the City Clerk's budget in the whole city budget? Is there, how difficult would it be to break it out? Because it is a separate elected official function.
Well, aside from the, the annual pay, the expenses are incidental, office supplies, legal notices, and so it, it's, when people have come to us and, and have asked, what's the cost for, what's the overhead for our elected officials? They want to see it together, so that's what we've done, been doing that for a number of years. There was a time, I'm dating myself, 25 years ago, it was a different setup, but then it was, it was a full-time position, it was a part-time position, so there were, there were other line items involved, so it's a part-time position, like other part-time positions in the budget, it is, is identified as part of the legislative system, but it's not broken out. It would be a couple very spare pages. It wouldn't necessarily serve a public purpose.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Greg?
Yep.
Alderman Favor.
I'll just ask you a question, two questions. You said 25 years ago, when was the last time roughly that you think we had a broken-out budget for the clerk?
2013.
Okay. So that predates me. The other question is, I was looking to see when we might have had a comptroller with the City of DeKalb.
That, that would have been, we, we had a treasurer slash comptroller for any number of years, as, as far back as I can-
When was the last time we had employed someone as a comptroller?
2011.
So the city's functioned, and we've passed our CAFER and PAFER annual audits from expensive law, or accounting firms that do come in and create a detailed report. I think they poll several, whether it's employees, whether it's council members, they poll, poll all of us, asking if there's anything that we even consider to be minutely fraudulent or any opportunities that might exist within the City of DeKalb, and there aren't. They've not found anything. We don't, we, we keep trying to go back to the past, the past. The ERP system that we're implementing doesn't require as many employees as we have going forward. It should have within it the checks and balances and the controls that are required to manage the city's finances. We also take a third-party outside annual audit to make sure that we're covering our bases. So just to continue trying to throw up a shadow all the time that we're missing something, we're not covering something, it just is wearing out. There's not been any issues in the city since 2013 without the comptroller.
However, when the treasurer slash comptroller was eliminated, this position was, these positions were taken by the new Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director, full-time, both positions were-
And again, the reports that we have, that the third-party accounting hasn't caused that, that out as a red flag.
Alderman, I, I am telling you what the recommendations are. I am telling you, as I presented, that there are questions not answered.
There are questions that don't, there are questions that don't need answers. We've been, again, working well as municipality. Just trying to dig up some dirt is just getting a little old, and the fact that, again, we've asked previous managers, as well as the current City Manager, to reduce the head count, he's done what we've asked.
I don't want to dictate policy to you. I will tell you that as City Clerk and as a citizen, I have a right to participate in this process, and it may weary you, but I will continue to do that.
That's-
I care about the city as much as you do.
But you keep just calling something, you know, that there's a shadow over the finances on the city when there isn't, and there's nothing that's been reported, there's nothing, audits from, again, third-party audits, not related to the city.
I have made no accusations of anyone. I am just asking that some things be scrutinized under your responsibilities, your fiduciary responsibilities, and to look at some things on your own without taking the, to, to look at things on your own, it's your fiduciary responsibility. Now, basically, here is what, and I had no intention of-
Point of order, takes precedence. I just want to point out, if we're talking about roles, the, the City Clerk has no aldermanic powers, and it is not professional or within the realm of, of the municipal code or our city policies that the City Clerk can engage the council, as she has been doing with one of our aldermen.
The alderman engaged me.
That is incorrect. I was actually directing my questions to the City Manager, but I didn't want to be rude.
All right, you are telling me to sit down and shut up, basically, and that's not going to happen all the time.
I was asking when the City Manager knew of the last comptroller. I was asking the City Manager about the PAFER and the CAFER annual reports that we get from a third-party auditing firm. I was asking him questions. You chose to step in and answer the questions. I chose not to be rude and tell you to not talk.
That would be kind of up to the chair, actually, if you want to get down to it, but I participated tonight. You can make whatever conclusions you want to, but just because I am the City Clerk whom you all are trying to erase does not mean that I lose any of my rights as a citizen. I am going to continue to exercise those rights to the best of my ability.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Lynn, and if you recall, when we, when we first had you come up to the thing I was asking, you, speaking as a public citizen or as our City Clerk, I think to your point, Bill, I'm sure that, that the, the items of engagement as we have here, we've done a nice job over the years to try to get away from any ongoing conversation like that, and to your point, Alderman Favor, I do believe you answered, you asked the question, and City Clerk Fizikas was quick to, to respond to you, and I think the minutes should, should reflect that also. Alderman Smith.
I was sitting here, but now I have to respond, especially to Alderman Favor and his support. One thing I want to remember, I was here when there was a comptroller and treasurer, probably the only one sitting in this room, probably Mr. Nicholas. That was replaced prior to any council sitting here. We have a Financial Advisory Committee that sits in place. As Mr. Peddell stated, there are a couple PhDs and masters that sit on this committee, I think in accountancy and above. We have passed the CAFER, GFOA, audits. I have the utmost confidence in our Assistant City Manager. We also have policies that were put in place by that group dating January 9, 2017. If they saw issue, if these experts saw issues with the way we are conducting business, it would have come out by our experts. I have the utmost confidence, sometimes I may disagree with them, in Mr. Peddell, Mr. Teresinski, Mr. Parker was on there at the time, I can go on and on, all these gentlemen I know. So I think their own statements have indicated we are doing things correctly. We are doing things like they want. I don't know what more we can do, and I'm going to be quiet at this point.
Can we call the question, please?
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 2019-080, adopting the annual budget for the City of DeKalb on first reading. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
This ordinance is approved on first reading.
I'd like to move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we waive second reading and a pass, and pass this ordinance. Any further discussion? Alderman Morris.
I just think it might be prudent to wait with something this large, just to see if anyone has anything else to say before we prove it. That's all.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
No.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
This ordinance is approved as presented. Number eight, Ordinance 2019-081, authorizing a zoning map amendment for the LI Light Industrial District to PDI Plan Development Industrial District to allow for a cannabis business establishment, medical cannabis dispensary at 700 Peace Road, BQ Enterprises Incorporated. And entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Right to the point that this application and the proposed location meet all of our setback requirements, and also including those dispensary regulations that were recently adopted by the council. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing on the petition on October 23rd, and by unanimous vote of six to zero, recommended approval, and in this case, they were approving, and the council is asked to approve tonight a zoning map amendment from the LI Light Industrial District to the PDI Plan Development Industrial District, and that would be sufficient to permit a medical cannabis dispensary, and there are some other exceptions to the UDO, which regard minimum lot size for plan development, which were consistent with the, the purposes involved here.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin. Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
That motion passes on first reading. Does any member of the council want to waive second reading and approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any further discussion? And Bill, we're voting on the waiver of the second reading and approving this ordinance. A roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved as presented. Moving right along, item number nine, Ordinance 2019-082, approving a waiver to Article 13 dash, excuse me, 13.03.9 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and a special use permit to allow an electronic changeable copy sign, that's a digital display sign, at 650 North First Street, which is the Clinton Rosette Middle School. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, there's a, a manual changeable copy sign at the, the school, and they have asked, as others have more recently, to convert to an LED-powered informational sign, obviously where there may be a changeable copy. This electronic, we're, we're concerned, will it create a distraction to drivers by? All of those concerns have been met by the design. The Planning and Zoning Commission nevertheless is required to hold a public hearing, and did so on November 6th, and voted unanimously to recommend to you approval of this particular proposed sign, and we recommend that you follow the- And this was one of the two proposed licensees that were discussed on October 28th. Lacy's Place has had a liquor license, video gaming license in the past. The site that they have chosen, 1704 Sycamore Road, is suitable in terms of our UDO requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a hearing on the proposal, voted four to one in favor of the proposal, and recommended the rezoning request to you for your consideration tonight.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Yes, Alderman Finuchin, please.
Just to confirm the location. Bill, is this in the old bakery location there?
Yes.
Thank you.
No more pecan bread there. It's all something else.
Is there a time limit on this? I know we went around the first time.
In the background, I pointed out that the commission recommended, and we recommend to you, that there is a back, there is a time limit. The, let me look here, I wrote it. I'm not seeing it. There is a... Dan, can you help me here? I don't see it.
The hours would follow the liquor code hours?
No, we're talking about time limit to get going.
Correct.
Did we amend that with the other application?
Is that where I'm getting them confused? To apply, you know, basically to open?
Yeah, there was an ordinance passed that gave them a certain time to apply in which they're meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
I'm sorry to answer your question.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, there was a certain amount of time to, with respect to the building improvements and then also the licensure.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Any member wish to waive second reading and approve?
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved as presented. Now, it's time for reports and communications, council member reports. We'll begin with our first ward alderman, Carolyn Morris.
No report.
Alderman Bill Finuchin.
A couple of things, if I may. First of all, you may recall, two weeks ago, I talked about the Let's Talk Turkey event. I want to report how successful that was with the, actually, 287 actual turkeys collected, but the monetary donations of over $9,000. So very successful. It's going to help. Tomorrow, the Salvation Army will be distributing those Thanksgiving baskets. Again, I want to reiterate what Brad said earlier about the IHSA this weekend. It'd be great if you could come out to a couple of games, or if you're still looking to do some volunteer, you can reach out to me or reach out to Brad, and we'll find something for you to do, even as simple as just running an elevator up and down Husky Stadium. And then the last thing is another food drive that's coming up at the end of next week. It's actually the radio station, SWIK, is freezing for food, where TD Ryan spends a good part of four days outside the whole time. I'm crazy enough, I spend part of that time with him. And again, they just look to collect non-perishable foods, and all go to the Salvation Army Food Pantry that serves all of DeKalb County.
Thank you, Alderman Finuchin. Alderman Smith?
Just to reiterate on my fellow alderman, I was volunteered to help him at the IHSA football.
That's right. I should mention that, that Alderman Smith, the mayor, Alderman Verbic, Alderman Faver, city manager Bill Nicholas, and assistant city manager Ray Munch are all helping out over this weekend at one time or another.
It'll be worth our while, believe me.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Alderman Perkins?
At one point, we'd like to announce, we're going to have a ward meeting next Wednesday at the Salvation Army, if any folks are interested in coming to talk.
That's Ward Four, ward meeting. What time is that going to start?
Seven.
Seven o'clock at the Salvation Army.
Salvation Army over on Grove, yep.
Yeah, I would encourage folks from the fourth ward who may be watching or listening to come and meet our new fourth ward alderman. Express to him any comments you may have. You'll probably get a few. Hope so. Good. Alderman McAdams, fifth ward.
No report.
Alderman Faver, our seventh ward.
So next week, Thursday, following the fourth ward, I'm going to have a seventh ward meeting at the DeKalb Police Department at 7:00 PM in the training room.
Good. I applaud our alderman for having some ongoing ward meetings. I think that's wonderful. I do have a couple of items. The first is a reminder that, again, a real champion in our community, a fellow by the name of Gary Mullis, he's been running this Toys for Tots Country Music Show down at the high-rise, senior high-rise, for, believe it or not, 50 years now. And he's going to be doing that on Sunday, December 1, from 1:00 to 5:00. I talked to Gary this morning, and he said he's got two bands and two other musical groups. They're going to be having country music, bluegrass, gospel, Christmas songs. I know a few of us have been asked down there to take part in a couple of the things. So I would encourage folks to, you know, do two things. Not only possibly attend this 50th Annual Country Music Show, Toys for Tots toy drive, but if you see Gary Mullis around, thank him. Here's a guy who really cares about his community. Now, look up on the screen there. There's another couple of people who really, really care. On the left is Terry Ryan, TD Ryan. He's been doing Let's Talk Turkey for god knows how many years. And there to the right is our second ward alderman, Bill Finuchin. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to Finuchin. I mean, Bill, you have been so involved in this event and so involved with Salvation Army. And I just think it's time for this community to thank you for all your service. And that's why we put that picture up there. You have another picture up there? There it is. I want to thank our DeKalb Fire Department, who that very day came out and delivered 125 turkeys, several thousand dollars that they had collected for the event. And they were posing out there besides the, I think that's on Grove Street, there, outside the Salvation Army. So to Alderman Finuchin and to our fire department and to so many within our community who participated in that wonderful event, thank you. I really, really appreciate it. I know the community does. One other final comment, and that is, I was going to mention this during our discussion on cannabis, but I forgot. For anybody who is a member of the DeKalb County Farm Bureau, you may have received a copy of this magazine called DeKalb County Farm Bureau Connections. And it outlines a couple of farmers, many of you may know them, Steve Drendel and his younger son, Kevin. They're growing hemp in DeKalb County between Malta and Waterman. And there, this year, there were 151 acres of industrial hemp grown in the county. There are nine farmers who have been licensed to do hemp. 151 acres. That compares with this number of acres planted during World War II. If you recall, hemp was grown for rope and other cords. 12,000 acres back during World War II were people growing hemp, a hemp in DeKalb County. So there is a difference between hemp and marijuana. And I'm going to give all of this to what I consider our marijuana guru on this, on this city council, fifth ward Alderman McAdams, who's been encouraging me and council, I think, to consider our cannabis and marijuana legislation here over the past several months. So take a look at that magazine. It is mine. I'd like to read it. And if anybody wants a copy of that magazine, you're going to have to wrestle away from Alderman McAdams, or I think if you just go over to the Farm Bureau and ask for a copy of their Connections magazine, it's really, really interesting on this particular article. So it's all yours for a few weeks.
Thank you.
Scott, yeah, you're welcome. Okay, I have no other communications. City Clerk Lynn Fazikas, anything to report?
Yes, a couple of things. Recently, I participated in a conference call hosted by the Council on Foreign Relations. You know, as city clerk and also in my real life, I'm a local election official. And so I was invited to that. Because of, the topic was election interference and cybersecurity. And it was pretty interesting. There were 41 or 42 states, state-level and local-level officials involved in this conference call. Part of it is online, if anybody is interested. If you go to the Council on Foreign Relations, a nonpartisan think tank, there were comments made that, from two speakers, that they have transcribed and put online and also audio-recorded. And about 18 minutes long, pretty interesting. There was also a Q and A. That was something that was kept private in case somebody said something that was to, you know, so people could be candid and maybe not give too much away in the way of their security measures. But I really, I really would urge people to do that. Election security is a nonpartisan issue that affects all of us. I do feel that the, on the local scene, there are a number of steps that we've taken when it comes to prioritizing redundancy and other things. But if you have occasion to be writing your member of Congress, you may want to urge them to release the federal funds, the federal resources that are supposed to go toward election security. They're dragging their feet on it, and it's almost 2020. Another thing that I wanted to mention is for the members of the public or the sources for my budget remarks. All of this can be found online at the city's website. Pay plans and total compensation reports are on the human resources pages. And annual budgets are on the finance pages, and those go back to 2008. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so much of what we talk about and what we decide upon and how we spend our money is on our website. And I would just encourage folks to continue to come to that. It's sometimes a little bit difficult to navigate here and there, but believe me. And if you ever have a problem, call Ray Munch or call someone who, you know, is primarily responsible for the coordination and the new refresh, and he'll get you the answer, you know. And I just want to say one thing about local voting irregularity, not irregularities, but rules and regulations, Lynn, according to your report. I remember, it was three years ago, this month, I think, that I came in and filed nominating petitions for mayor in my, of the city of DeKalb. And I tell you, I was given a lot of scrutiny right here in this building. And I talked to Lynn Conde, who is the, one of the gurus over in the county office. And so, you know, anybody who is running for office here has to jump through a few hoops. But after you jump through those hoops, you understand why you do it. And those of you who have had nominating petitions and all that, you understand why. So I thank you for that report, Lynn, and those two reports. Okay, city manager, Bill Nicholas, anything to report?
I do.
Good.
In the wee hours of the morning today, the Grinch made an unexpected appearance between Second and Third Street in the westbound lane, when a car driven by somebody under the influence skipped the curb, took out four trees, two of our nice tall historic lamp poles.
Oh, wow.
I think five or six different bike racks, and then came to a stop. I want to thank Andy Ryan, his crew, and the police department for jumping on that. No life-threatening injuries were incurred, and none of the buildings were crashed into. But there's serious damage down there, and not to mention the fact that we lost all the lights on that side of the street. We're going to do a few things to brighten up the downtown. This Friday night is a big night for our downtown merchants, and we're going to do our best to make sure that the deluge is not going to impede it. The only other thing I would say is happy Thanksgiving.
And to you, thank you. Thanks for that report. Any other report from any of our department heads, et cetera? If not, thank you very much. I would now call for a recess so this council can go into executive session. Approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss, number one, personnel as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C1. And number two, purchase or lease of real property as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C5. Would I entertain a motion to recess into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Faver. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting of the city council is now in recess for executive session.